Clerk call the order. Start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk call the roll please.
Beide.
Here.
Crouch.
Here.
Herry.
Here.
The fall.
Here.
Airline.
There any changes to the agenda?
I would like to have a full session of collective bargaining on the update.
I just want to add that to the end.
Yeah, I'm not expecting any taking any action.
No actions will be taken, just a discussion. Okay, move forward. So before we go into public comment, we believe there are quite a few people here tonight wanting to comment upon the use of the Plum Pavilion, requested by Ms. Pedant. And we want to conduct the order in a me- meeting in an orderly and efficient manner. So before we start the public comment portion of the meeting, could you raise your hand if you're here to make a comment about the use of that? Okay, yeah. Four, okay. With four, I don't believe we need to amend our public comment. Not this phone.
Welcome to the conferencing center at any time. If you need technical assistance during your call, press star zero. After the tone, please state your name, followed by the pound sign.
City Hall conference chambers?
Thank you. You are the first caller to this conference. Please wait while others join.
Okay, with four, we will not need to amend. We do have our ordinance of a limit of thirty minutes for public comment, so that would take us to twenty minutes, so we'll still be under the rules. So we can go ahead and move forward with that. There's a five-minute time limit, or sorry, a three-minute time limit once you get started. I also wanted to mention the call to the public for support on this one. There were two items with why this is being discussed. It's not a, so much as allowing the concert, as whether we would allow beer sales or ticketed sales on the pavilion. So our current ordinances state that beer sales are not allowed within City Park. And the ticketed sales.
Mayor Lansford.
All right, Jimmy, we're getting, hi Jimmy, we're getting started with right before public comment. So item one was the beer sales, and then item two were ticketed sales. Our current, as a pavilion was donated, there were people that donated funding to the community for the Plum Pavilion, with the expectation it would always provide free entertainment for the citizens of Streeter. So the ticketed event would go against that piece of it. So that's the, kind of what the discussion council would be having regarding the manner, just so that you know that before, beforehand. So at this point, I'll go ahead and I'll open up public comment. If anybody that's interested, you can go ahead and step off because there's a microphone. That way the phone, whoever's on the phone can hear you. Do you want to go first, or?
Joe Richard. And I have no problem with them doing an event. I have a problem with being in the City Park. Again, no ticketed sales and no alcohol sales. So find a different place to have your event, and there's no problem. But I don't believe that the city should be put on the spot to host it.
Hello, I'm Tony Pedant of the 26 LaSalle Street. I am one of the petitioners for the change in the ordinance. Originally, when we requested and made our proposal, we were hopeful that perhaps a variance or exception could be made to the existing ordinance. It wasn't until after we presented it that we realized that the entire ordinance would need to be changed. Having said that, I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing. The pavilion has been up for a significant number of years and often sits unused. It's a beautiful pavilion, it's in a beautiful City Park. I think if council would consider changing the ordinance to allow for ticketed events or paid-for events on the stage, we could bring large bands that cost a pretty penny to that pavilion and make better use of it. In regard to beverage sales, whether they're alcoholic or non, for our event, what's critical to us is to have the venue. Beverage sales are secondary. If we don't get approval or you choose not to affect a change regarding alcohol sales in City Park, then we would have to adjust for that and sell non-alcoholic beverages, and the ticket price would have to reflect a lost revenue. I think at the committee of the home meeting, Councilwoman Vida, I mentioned that the Pluto Fest and the Homebrew Fest included indirect sales of the sampling of beer. And I think that's the way other, other events in Streeter take place. You don't necessarily directly purchase the beer at the event. You purchase a ticket, which then you redeem for a beverage. And we would follow that same protocol that's been used in other events and activities. So we would be happy to go somewhere else if there were another stage, but there isn't one. It happens to be in the City Park. So that's where it is, that's where we would hope to have our event because there is no indoor facility that can accommodate the number of persons we think would attend this event. So we're kind of a little bit without hencepipe. That's where the pavilion is, that's where it was built. And sometimes things change. And in order for us to bring that type of talent to Streeter and that quality of talents, then maybe we have to make some adjustments.
Thanks.
We get more something applied forms? I understand the tickets, you know, ticketing an event. Our club, we ran into this and we're having a swap use. We couldn't charge due to the place. Well, a donation. Many times of, when I went to go took the ticket thing on a donation. That would, I'm assuming that would be within the parameters to be in the stadium.
That's a question, yeah. You can ask for donations at the event if you wanted to pass the pad or whatever.
There's several companies that went to work, didn't donate it.
Yeah, but you can require a donation to end it.
Yeah, we had the same thing, we had it when we had Grant's Place in Princeton. That I would see be able to be workable. And I'm all in favor of having a park being used by a big size, a large size event. Have no problems happening. Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Champlain, and I am one hundred percent in favor of having the concerts back in the City Park. They used to be up there a couple of years ago, and they always had a great attendance. I may mistaken, but I don't think they had any trouble from outsiders, insiders, or anywhere. As far as the beer sales, I do recall some outfit up in the park had a beer can. How'd they get that through? I don't care if it's beer or not, but it'd be a great place to put those concerts back in that park. Thanks.
Thank you. So let me explain the difference between a direct sale and an indirect sale. So a direct sale would be, I have a can of whatever, you pay cash for that. Indirect sales are, you would buy a ticket. So the way that the latest festival worked with the indirect sales is it was homebrew. It is local brewers that make their items to sample. By state statute, you're allowed to purchase three two-ounce tasting tickets. The homebrewers do not get paid. They do this as a donation or a contest or between themselves as a way to, they do this more as a competition for the breaking rights that they won. And then the event that's throwing that for Pluto Fest keeps the five dollars as a donation for themselves. But it's not buying a twelve-ounce or bottle or can of an alcoholic beverage. It's specifically for homebrew or that kind of a sale. So that was the, that's the current ordinance that's allowed. So it's, that's the difference between the two. Those people, actually several Streeter people that had made their own beer or their. So we had, for anyone else who'd like to come over, please?
I'd like to address council.
And we have one more person up for public comment?
Okay.
I'm Sinabon, 614 North Evans Street. And I have been part of the organization of Jamming at the Clock. We provide twelve to thirteen weeks of free entertainment in the summertime for, this will be our seventh year in 2022. Talk about the proposal for Plum Pavilion. Before getting to that, I think council needs to relinquish control to our city manager to give him the authority to decide what goes in or whatever of our city parks. Moving forward, a future decision should be made by allowing ticketed events at the pavilion. To draw larger bands to fill that huge stage costs quite a bit of money. Fourth of July committee had Eddie Coroso there, Three Piece Band, on Saturday afternoon, July the third. And they just don't fill the stage up. We had the IDCC Jazz Band on Fourth of July, fifteen members. Big band, built a stage. And these ticketed events would pay for the larger bands who need to fill that stage. I don't see the high school band or grade school band doing any concerts there. You know, the people of Streeter had showed their support for us every Friday night for twelve to thirteen weeks. And they would support a bigger band on that stage, too. And as far as donations, I'm not sure about the figures, but comment doesn't print their own money. That money came from their customers, which are all of us in this room. Councilman Crouch has recused himself from voting on labor issues, I believe, before. And I think anybody on council should do the same that's on a nonprofit or on another taxing body to avoid conflicts of interest. And a person told me, a wise man always changes and a fool never does. And I think that can apply here, too.
Funny enough, the high school band was performing at 6:30 tonight on the pavilion. So they were, they had a fake pavilion that I watched before I came here. So, so you get to see them. One more?
My name is Eugenio Dismoscotti Jr. I'm at 518 South Bloomington Street in Streeter. I'm in favor of using the pavilion. If a few local brewers want to have some samples, I think it'd be a great thing. Let's use the pavilion, straight. That's all I got to say.
Any other comments on this? Hey, Jimmy, you want to go ahead? Looks like public comment is complete.
Yes, I'd like to. I am a veteran, and I can tell you that the veterans in this community hold that section of the park as sacred ground. I was very much involved working with the Deacon Trust on the Spice Pool, replacing the water fountain at the park and other things with the Hart Family Trust. And the, I don't think that any of those, as well as the Sodas from the Trust, would like to see a venue of this nature in the City Park. I think Mr. Plum, when he dedicated this plan to the city of Streeter, he dedicated it primarily for public use only. Mr. Rosack has told me that next year there is a series of concerts that he has scheduled and is currently is working on it. And those wouldn't all be free. There's a couple of places with Bill Phelan's place and with Chad Lucas's place who have venues currently that they have stages for acts. And a suggestion that was made to me was that the Jamming at the Clock has been extremely successful, and you guys had to be applauding for that. However, that maybe some of this group that have taken us on selling the liquor back in the park and everything else. Twenty years ago, we had an issue in the park primarily with the carnivals damaging the trees. And it's taken that long to get the park to back the way it is right now. And maybe that a group could be formed and organized and look for a venue somewhere where the events that you talked about could be held at a different location or the, and I know that there's plenty of volunteers that would be willing to help out on that. But I just would encourage anybody who has none to just take a walk down throughout the city park. Take a look at those plaques for them. Who has put up their money? And who has invested back into this community? And I do not believe that they would be receptive to having a venue where liquor would be sold. Not an event, it's not a place for someone to make a profit. It's for the public use only. And that's one of the reasons why that when we decided to build the pavilion, we said all venues would be open to the public, including weddings, if somebody had a wedding and somebody else wants to walk through wedding party, they are allowed to do so because it's open to the public and free. That's my comments.
Any other public comments this time? If not, go with item one, new business. Item one's resolution, 2021-39, award of bid for demolition to Robert Shay Kineak, Illinois, in conjunction with the 305 South Bloomington Street and 1201 East Livingston Street, demo project in the city of Streeter. I get a motion and second to all noise. Hey, Brian, motion, and Tim, second. Any discussion?
Well, I can just make a few remarks. The city has a list of homes that we would like to demolish this year. Most of the funds would be borne by a grant from the state. The status of that grant is on hold pending some final court decisions. And then they respond to the state itself to deal with those decisions. So we're uncertain when or if we're going to get those funds. These demolitions tonight would be funded through local resources. We did budget some general fund money this year, and it's important that we at least try to deal with the problem properties without having to waste another year.
You need a second?
I have, no, I have a first and a second on this one. Any other discussion?
Okay.
Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Vida?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Herry?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item two, resolution for the award of bid for demolition to G and M Recycling, Streeter, Illinois, in conjunction with the 209 South Sterling Street and 207 Grove Street, demo project in the city of Streeter. I get a motion and a second.
So, second.
Motion by Brian and second by Matt. Any discussion on this one? So this is, I know it's the same item, and we bid these individually to get the best price, so.
Right, so it was a total bid free to the bidders for all the properties. And we, Jeremy did a wonderful job by specing it so that we could pick a little bit per property. And that's what we get here. So we take some money.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, are we none? Clerk call the roll, please.
Vida?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Herry?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Okay, item three, a motion to receive and place on file the Plan Commission recommendation 2021-08 from October 12, 2021 to recommend approval and granting of a special use permit under the provisions of Title 17, 17.16010 to allow for outdoor parking of heavy equipment and the operation of a metal fabrication shop, creating or assembling of light goods to be sold primarily onsite in a C3 general commercial zoning district at the property family known as 1302 South Bloomington Street, Streeter, Illinois. I get a motion and a second. Motion for Tim, or by Tim?
Second.
Second by Matt.
Do we know what the fabrication is going to be?
Hope you're up to it. The petitioners here in the, in the room, Jimmy, so let him come up.
Maybe make some buckets for small machines, like a Skidster bucket attachments. If the city or somebody needed parts for a backhoe such as a pin, stuff you can do on a lathe and a melt, them sorts of things. That has, you know, has to do with equipment that's, you know, that I want to use for the other part of the special use for, for heavy equipment. That's all I got.
Okay, any other questions or any other discussion on this one? So this is sort of briefly, basically we're placing on file what the Plan Commission discussed from this item. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vida?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Herry?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item four is approv, or ordinance 2021-18, approval and issuance of a special use permit to Eugenio Dismoscotti Jr. to allow for outdoor parking of heavy equipment and operation of a metal fabrication shop. I get a motion and a second.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion by Brian and second by Tim. Any discussion? So you see none? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vida?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Herry?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item five is a motion to receive and place on file the Plan Commission recommendation 2021-10 from October 12, 2021 to recommend denial of a change in zoning and amendment of the district zoning map from R1B, single-family to C2 neighborhood commercial zoning district under the provision of the Streeter Municipal zoning code for properties listed at 511, 513, and 515 through 17 James Street in the city of Streeter, Illinois, counties of LaSalle and Livingston. I get a mo, requesting motion to receive and place on file.
Aye. Second.
Okay, motion by Tim and second by Brian.
But the zoning will stay the same? As current?
Yes, if we, recommending denial on this one, we're placing on file. The item six has approving the change in zoning. So if the motion's to approve, then we would want to vote nay if you do not approve that for the next item. So this one's the place on file. All right, any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vida?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Herry?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item six would be actually changing the zoning. So this is approving a change in zoning and amendment to the district zoning map for 511 through 17 James Street. All lots being situated in Bruce Township, LaSalle County, Illinois from R1B, single-family, medium-density residential to C2 neighborhood commercial under the provisions of the city zoning code as set forth in Title 17 of the Streeter Municipal Code. So can I get a motion to either approve or deny? Okay, we're. Motion by Brian. Second to Tim, and is your motion to approve or deny? Got that, sir?
Don't we just vote nay?
So we'll do a motion to approve the ordinance. So if you're in favor, aye. If you're against, vote nay on this one. Any discussion?
Do you have approval of leaving the zoning as is?
As the, it would, the approval would be to change it. So if you vote aye, it would be to change it. And if you vote nay, it would be to keep it the same.
Okay.
Ready?
All right, clerk, call the roll, please.
Vida?
Nay.
Crouch?
Nay.
Herry?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Nay.
So item seven, a motion to authorize the city manager to approve lien waivers up to $10,000. You get a motion and second to authorize the city manager to approve lien waivers.
So move.
Oh, can I just take a count of? There may be some liens that are up to $15,000. And in the course of looking into it, I changed my number to fifteen.
Okay.
But I think most of them are going to be less. Any, any, anything above fifteen, I think that's a count of ten.
So you get a motion to go up to 15,000?
So move. Second.
So that would be motion by Tim and second by Matt. So any discussion on this one?
Well, the city holds a number of lots because we've demolished properties and as long as we own it, we're responsible for.
long as we own it, we're responsible for property maintenance, and these lots are also off the tax rolls. The idea would be to encourage neighboring property owners that purchase the land and to, you know, then return it to the tax rolls and return it to private maintenance responsibilities. There are instances where outside investors are purchasing properties from bad taxes, and then the property owners, the neighbors, come to us and ask us the way of all the liens. And, and we have typically done that. I'd like to get a little bit more involved in the actual negotiations because I have no idea what the outside investor is recouping on the sale of the property, and it seems unfair to me where we would waive everything that we would have leaned because of the ongoing demolition, ongoing maintenance, you know, mowing the grass and so forth, prior to demolition, and then they ask for demolition costs, and then some outside investor makes a profit above what they have to pay for the bad taxes. So I want to get a little, I want to get involved in that transaction if we can and try to up the return as, as opposed to just a blanket lien waiver. But it's going to require some negotiations, and every case is going to be different, different sets of facts and so forth, and so I'd like them to just enter into it in line with the overall spending of what we already have as part of the position.
For this one, what oftentimes, what we wanted to do is encourage someone in the neighborhood to take these lots over. We'll have, so we, like Dave said, we have a house that's demolished or, and the city's mowing the grass, we're not getting any property tax income because it's now in the county or the city's hands, and so if a neighbor takes interest on it and wants to, to take over the care and upkeep, it's a benefit for us because then we no longer have that maintaining of mowing the grass, and we also have that back on the tax rolls where we can get some income from the lot. So that's just a situation where we do have the lien out there, but if we don't do, if we don't waive the liens, we may never sell that property, that may sit there on our issues for a long time.
I, I, I think the, the buyer, the neighbor, the Streeter resident that owns the neighboring property kind of sets what they're willing to pick, right? And so I'm not trying to squeeze the buyer, I'm trying to squeeze the investor, someone who got it for bad taxes, lives in Moline, and they're just trying to maximize what they're kind of trying to get, and so the city doesn't ever see anything back on it.
Okay, any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Eury?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
So item eight is again Tony Pett's request to use the City Park Plum Pavilion. There's no ordinance attached to this one, so we do not need a motion or a second to approve this, it's just on here as a discussion item. We've done some, some discussion already on this one, so I'll say if there are any further discussion from council this time? Well, I have a few, I have a few items that I wanted to mention on this one. I guess that the, if this was just to allow a concert, I think there's, there's absolutely no issue. I believe all the council would have, would agree, more councils are great for the city, great for the livelihood and the community in general. Through the years, several organizations have sponsored music on the stage, but where the requests on this are, outside of just having more usage of the pavilion, comes down to the alcohol sales and ticketed sales. Again, we specifically have the no direct sales in the City Park. And the ticketed events, again, Mayor Lansford mentioned it earlier, but we've had several donors put money towards the Plum Pavilion with that expectation that it would be free entertainment for years to come. Personally, I believe it's not in the best interest of the city to go back on that promise to the people that donated to us. I know times change, but there's, said several times when it's, when we get something from the community, we want to honor what that original intention was. An example of the letter to council mentioned the Fourth of July Committee, and that committee, five oh one C three organization, very well supported in our community, and they specifically moved the event to North Point so that they could sell tickets and alcohol to recoup that money, support the event. So I think that move has done nothing but actually benefited growth of the fourth. If we tried to move the fourth back into the park, there wouldn't have been enough room for it, so I don't really necessarily agree that that's where you have to have entertainment. So personally, again, this is me, two options, if ticketed sales and beer sales are needed to cover the cost, then absolutely an offsite location would be best, but for pavilion use, possibly other alternatives for funding can be found. Railing the troops to be here is, is great, and it's good to see citizens involved in our meeting, but there's also people that are willing to sponsor this kind of, of act to also provide free entertainment for our community. One example, Streeter Tourism helps cover costs for performances on the pavilion, and that would be a good start if something like that were to be started. You could book vendors and get a fee from them to try to cover some of the costs. As I said, Streeter's always been a giving community, and I'm sure that that can happen easily. In the beginning of twenty twenty, an organization that I'm on booked a large tribute band to perform on the pavilion pretty easily. I had sponsorships, three quarters of it covered within about a week, and again, that goes to the giving nature of our community. Unfortunately, with COVID nineteen and the shutdowns and everything, events had to get canceled, and, and that didn't come through. And again, for those music fans, I mentioned Streeter Tourism, they're in the works to fund concerts again for next year. With COVID, they put that on hold for the last two years just because of the rules regarding public outings and the uncertain nature that we've been living in for the last two years. So plans are in the works to bring that series back stronger. So that is what I have for that one. Again, I don't know if I want to add anything in, but this one, there's no, we don't have actions, so really what we would do is, at this point, we wouldn't vote to change the ordinances or anything, we can vote to basically table and continue this and do further discussion, or we can kind of take into consideration the thoughts of the people up here and, and see if that's something we want to discuss any further. We can just go ahead and, not really to say no, but just not put it as a topic to go ahead and go further on. So I would need, I guess, a consensus to, as far as what we would want to do in that aspect. Do you want to have any?
Motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table this one? You get a second on that? Or any? Okay, so we have a motion to table and a second by Tim and then by Matt. Is there any further discussion on here?
I would just say that I, my biggest thing I fund is the ticket. I like, Terry had said I would recommend kind of going the route of the Fourth of July Committee and see what you can fundraise, just so it can be open to everyone in the community. I know also part of your expenses were privatizing the event, so maybe give it a year of fundraising, even fundraising at your weekly concert, or a big grand finale or something along those lines, but I, I think it'd be pretty hard to go back on the ticketing thing just because then that would, that set a future precedence as well.
And that's what I'm afraid of, is set the precedence for every, free is free. That's the intent of the pavilion. Doing my own research, looking at other communities in terms of, if they have a pavilion, everything is free. You cannot charge admission to a free facility that gets into the city, and I'm having a problem with that. Secondly, I'm having a problem with alcohol in parks. We've had a history of alcohol in parks, and that's what actually set this ordinance into motion in the first place because it gets out of control. But yeah, that's where I'm having a problem, is a ticketed facility that gets into the park. What's wrong with that?
Why are, why are we table leading this?
I would say this, yeah, we've, we've had the motion to table, but it sounds like I've got.
I can understand.
If you can come back with a plan that would work around the, the ticketing event, I'd, I'd be open to hear it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a concert at the park. I mean, to me, I just see it as another opportunity to maybe regroup and, and come back with a different proposal, if that's what you guys would like.
Well, it's, it's going to be the next thing elected council is who will make that decision.
Okay, so we, so we have a motion to table and a second on that motion. So it sounds like I've got four, four not in this, not at this time, right now. So I would say if we want to maybe motion that, or rescind the motion and then we, okay, so Tim will rescind the motion, and then what we would do is if you have, come up with another idea or a different way of, of setting this up, we can revisit that one in the future and, and try to come up with some kind of a, a plan for it. Okay. All right, any other discussion on item eight before we move on?
I don't think we should table it.
No, we've rescinded the motion, so at this point, they need to come back with a new request.
It, it's to give that committee an opportunity to come up with a different proposal to the council for study and evaluation, right?
Right. I don't think we need to vote on it because there's no motion on the floor.
Okay.
So we, 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 so, so the item, so we can move on to item nine, consent agenda? Request a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of one million six hundred and six thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Some move.
Okay, I have a motion by Brian and second by Tim. Any discussion? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Eury?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Okay, before we go into closed session, any city official comments? Okay, none from Mayor?
No.
Jim, anything? Jimmy, do you have any comments?
Who, Nate?
Yes, you. I think we're talking at the same time.
No, I, I said what I believe.
Okay. There were a few things. This Saturday in City Park, from ten AM to one PM, Lipwall Streeter is hosting a prescription drug and over the counter drop-off, so if you want to have any prescriptions or anything at home that you want to properly dispose of, you can drop it off at the drive-through. At City Park, you just need to remove labels or black out any personal information on there. There's a disc golf tournament happening at Marilla Park, there's a two-day event also happening this weekend. Day one is in Streeter, day two's at Baker Lake, I believe that's Peru, where this is through the Greater Juliet Group, so there will be some visitors for that one. So while they're in the room, there's a, there's a Moonlight Melodies at Nights at Columbus to benefit Jamming at the Clock, it's also happening Saturday, so somewhat busy weekend. And then as a reminder, as we are hitting the end of October, trick or treat hours are, in Streeter are Sunday, October thirty-first, from five to seven PM, and then there's also downtown trick or treats, typically the last Saturday of the month, and that would be Saturday, October thirtieth, from nine to noon. And so there, this time.
Can I make one comment on the, on the Thursday drop? That is a perfect example of, of a couple of volunteers who happened to be students at the time, came into manual labor with the help from our Public Works Department and developed a course which now I think is rated numbers two in the state. The one out at Marilla Park. Just shows you what volunteerism can do if it's, although in the right direction.
All right, this, again, request a motion and second to go into closed session on collective bargaining.
Some move. Second.
Second. Okay, motion by Brian and second by Matt. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Beadie?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Eury?
Aye.
McMillan?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Yes.
So we'll, go ahead and go to executive session.